We now call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly and publicly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
I don't see Mr. in the corner over there. Thank you. At this time, we will stand down, ask our Assistant County Administrator to lead us in our prayer and our pledge, Mr. Joseph Mosley.
Always with Bullock County, Georgia.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for your boundless blessings and we thank you for all that you do for us. We thank you for this beautiful weather. And now, Father, we ask that you would give this body as they deliberate the business of this community, the wisdom and insight they need to transact this business. We pray that you be with them and surround them with your love and your patience and your care. Father God, we thank you for those who are going through right now in various capacities in terms of healings. We pray that you would heal their bodies. And these are all the blessings we ask in Christ's name. Everybody said, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good God, and sir. Mr. Brown, the agenda says we have two proclamations, the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, if I can get that word out, Communicators Week, excuse me, and National Safe Digging Month. That's a new one.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners.
Hello, how are you?
I'm Erica, for those in watching, Director of 911, and this is my Deputy Director, Brett Cortez. We're here because every year during the second full week of April, communications personnel are honored in the public safety community. This week-long event started in 1981, and it set aside to celebrate and thank those who've dedicated their lives to serving the local user agencies as well as the public. Very important to celebrate them this week because we have a severe shortage nationwide in public safety in general, be it police, EMS, fire, or 911. We're here today to ask that the county celebrate with us by recognizing next week as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we have a proclamation that Julie has for you all to sign.
Mr. Brown?
This is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week from April 14th through 20th, 2024, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Liberty County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have for emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and EMTs by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of Liberty County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners declare the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2024, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Liberty County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe, signed this night of April 2024.
If you all will come, Erica. To the DS, as they call it, do this. Commissioners, you file in for the... So we dig in. Stop. Liberty County man. Commissioner Stevens messed that up. Thank you, Erica. Appreciate your service. How is the staffing in your department now?
Currently, we have 18, but we're about to lose two between tomorrow and our next week, no, Friday and next week. So we have another hiring process going. We're steadily working it.
Are they just leaving the county, or?
Yeah, some are leaving the county and some are going to totally different fields.
Burnout.
That too.
Now, I would hope that our effort to ensure that the pay rate is fair is not an issue.
It is comparable. We have come back, at one point we were at the highest. People were comparing to us. They've gotten to us.
So they caught up with us?
And we're about here. We haven't lost anybody to another center.
Okay, okay.
So having probably burnout and just changing careers.
So that's just part of the course for what you all do?
It is, it is. And because we're so short, I think the burnout's coming quicker than we've seen in the past.
Now, every now and again, there are things that employers can do to, I mean, little fringe benefits, little doughnuts, or whatever kind of things, trying to help with the burnout and trying to appease people so they won't jump ship. Let's talk about that offline. Let's talk about that offline. All right, thank you. Guess we bought a whole lot of doughnuts, huh? As I think about it. Mr. Brown, why didn't you stop me?
That's not in the budget.
Well, I may really smart some doing little things for the staff.
That's right.
I know some employees that little thing for the staff along and along to help with morale. National Safe Digging Month, who represents that?
This, we actually have representative from Coastal EMC here. We did also receive something from ACCG requesting us to recognize this month and adopt proclamation.
I remember that now. Yes, sir.
How we doing?
Hello, sir.
I'm Jake Horton, I'm the Operations Manager at Coastal EMC, and this is Tara Riffenbark. She's our Administrative Assistant at Coastal EMC. I also serve as the Chair of the Georgia Coast Utility Coordinating Committee, which is pretty much probably everybody knows is 811. We meet every other month, and we're trying to bring awareness to digging. I mean, everybody here knows how much construction's going on in Liberty, Bryan, McIntosh, Long County. I mean, it's growing. And what we do is we try to bring awareness to the digging, make sure everybody's calling for the dig, they're digging safely, and plus, we contact each other, whether it be telephone, or the county, or, you know, the electric company, fiber, whatever. We try to get in touch with each other and make sure that we're communicating everything, our projects, and trying to take care of each other's facilities. I think if you've been in Hinesville the past year, I think they've had two cuts that's totally shut down most of Hinesville, and that's what we're trying to avoid. So, April is Safe Digging Month, and we just want to recognize it, or the State Chapter of GUCC, they ask their local chapters to recognize it, and that's what we're here for.
Okay. If you will, sir, address the, I know you spoke of the call before you dig, address that to the, the citizens are watching you, go ahead and talk to the citizens a few minutes on.
Okay, so anytime that you are gonna dig mechanically with any kind of machinery, you have to call 811 before you dig, and then a locator, it'll notify all your different utilities, whether telephone, gas, sewer, water, what have you, and they'll come out, they got three days to mark it, and it's illegal to dig without that call. If you, if you don't, you're liable for the damages that incur from it.
And we don't want that.
No, no. I mean, there's so much stuff in the ground nowadays, especially, you know, it can, like I say, it shut down Hinesville a couple of times, you know, if you go to the gas pump and your debit card don't work and you ain't got no gas in your car, you in a fix.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you for sharing, so good to see you, Mr. Brown.
This is a proclamation for National Safe Digging Month, whereas thousands of times each year, the underground infrastructure in Georgia is damaged by those who do not have underground lines located prior to digging, resulting in service interruption, environmental damage, and threat to public safety, and whereas in 2005, the Federal Communications Commission designated 811 to provide contractors and homeowners a simple number to contact utility operators to request the location of underground lines at the intended dig site, and whereas the Georgia Coast Utility Coordinating Committee, a stakeholder-driven organization dedicated to the prevention of damage to underground utilities in Georgia, promotes the National 811 Notification System and Georgia 811 in an effort to reduce these damages, and whereas damage prevention is a shared responsibility. By using safe digging practices, the contractors and homeowners of Liberty County can save time, money, and help keep our infrastructure safe and connected, and therefore, I do proclaim on behalf of Liberty County the month of April 2024 as Liberty County's Safe Digging Month, and encourage all contractors and homeowners throughout the county to always contact 811 before digging.
You all will come on the podium here.
Sure.
What do you have there in your hand, young lady?
This is a sign that Georgia 811 asks us to also kind of present, so that shows that...
You come on that, one-on-one side one.
Yeah, come on down here. And if you would expand on why you're in here, Georgia Power...
It's good. I wanna how to face.
There you go.
There you go. All right. We dig. Okay. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
One, two, three. Five, six. Here you go. Hey, I'll get one for me.
How's the broadband program doing? I'm gonna put you on the spot, but...
I just got the last week in my house and I love it. But we're in the, we did the Riceboro area.
I'm sorry, he needs, am I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Client, am I, can the view, can people at home hear him? Nope, come to the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, I asked him how was the broadband program doing, that Coastal EMC is facilitating all along the coast, east end of Liberty County?
Just a little update, for those that don't know, the reason what we got into broadband is to serve underserved areas in our county and, you know, throughout our service territory. We're actually gonna go to each meter or two, you know, so we could read meters with it, and it'll serve dual purposes. We started out from Riceboro, we tied in with Darien, Darien's a partner in this with us, and we went to Colonel's Island, which everybody knows was underserved, and they had one choice, and their, the infrastructure was outdated. So we moved from Colonel's Island, now we've moved to the Fleming area around Sandy Run, we're going towards Allenhurst, Lake George, Isle of Wight, the Fleming area, and we're gonna do all of Liberty County before we do anything in any other county. So, that's a plus for Liberty County.
When you say all of Liberty County, you mean all of Liberty County?
All of Liberty County in our service territory. If we pass a Georgia power customer, we can serve them too, but we're not gonna actually build into Hinesville or anything like that.
Okay, I didn't know you did Allenhurst when you said.
Yeah, we do. We do Allenhurst all the way up, just about Arnold Drive in Waltherville.
Okay, okay. Good, well, good, I know the people are happy and are excited that if it's not there, it's on the way.
That's right. Sign up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you guys for coming. Minutes for the month of March would require our approval, Commissioners?
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
For sure, in the second we approve our March 5th and March 21st meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, please. Minutes are adopted. At this time, we're going to allow, Commissioner Gillis wants to make a statement, but let me read this prior to his statement, just for a little protocol. At this time, Commissioner Gillis has requested to make a public statement. I'm also told there may be other additional statements. I ask that all statements and responses be professional in delivery and avoid any personal attacks. We must be careful to exercise the same behavior we require in public hearings. We are each allowed to have our respective friendships and political affiliations. However, we must not allow those friendships or affiliations to interfere with our ability to remain objective, fair, and civil in our decision-making. That has been the respective behavior of this commission, and I solicit the help of each commissioner in preserving what we've built up over the years. Commissioner Gillis, your statement, please, sir.
Yes, good afternoon. Thanks, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for allowing me this moment to address a matter of great concern. A few weeks ago, the sheriff held a ceremony to announce a donation to the ban of a local high school to help fund their planned trip to Washington DC. Following the ceremony, I've started receiving copies of Facebook posts thanking the sheriff and the Board of Commissioners for donating the money. I grew up here in Liberty County, attended schools here, and I support the Board of Education and the students. The funds announced for use by the sheriff are managed by that department and are part of money collected from fines received for speeding in a school zone. There are very specific things that they can be used for. Unfortunately, helping the high school ban is not one of them. I have received text messages and calls from friends and constituents expressing concerns over the announcement and donation of these funds. I want to publicly let everyone know that I was invited to the ceremony, but refused to attend because I do not endorse it personally or as a commissioner. While social media is great for some things, but for others, it clouds an otherwise clear picture. I hope that anyone who has questions or concerns about this, contact your commissioner, our chairman, or Mr. Brown directly, so that we can let you know exactly how we feel about this matter. As a member of the Board of Commissioners, I will continue to do my best to handle the business of this county above board and in a proper manner. And on the 28th of March, I was made aware of a meeting with the Chairman, the County Administrator, the County Attorney, and the Sheriff, where the oversight of the red zone camera phones are now with the BOC. This is long overdue, but great that it happened. Now, I'm asking that the Board of Commissioners review the expenditures for accountability purposes and ensure that the expenditures outside of the established criteria are addressed according to policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our county admin, County Attorney, excuse me, will be presenting to us on the, at the mid-month meeting.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, the funds are not already with BOC in a way, right? According to the contract, the meeting that you all had, right? Because his attorney has not put, drafted a contract, right?
He's drafting the contract.
It's drafting, not already.
Yeah.
Okay, now, if we're going to look at one constitutional officer, we need to look at all, not just one. We need to quit discriminating against one constitutional officer, and I meant exactly what I said, if we're gonna do it with one, because red speed money is not a tax dollars. Like we have done in the past, we have issued money to other previous elected officials to take care of such thing as part of their health insurance for the rest of their life. That's tax dollars, but we're not looking at that. We have other issues in the county that we need to be looking at. I mean, and we're looking at one particular thing, red speed. Red speed is for those who violate going through the school zone, and I personally believe that the money is not being misused. Also, upon the last meeting that we had, we asked, there was an executive session. And, Mr. Brown, what was that executive session for?
I can't discuss an open session.
Now, what was the reason?
Um, legal, possible legal matter.
Legal possible matter, but we need to check, believe that we violated the sunshine law.
Be glad.
We need to check it, because number one, and I will say this, there was no legal advisor in that room, none.
Be glad to discuss that with you later.
I know, but I'm just letting you know, so that we won't be, we won't stay in trouble.
We are.
But it was no legal attorney, legal advisor in that room.
Right, doesn't have to be, but we can, we can talk about it.
Okay, so I say again, we need to watch how we discriminate against one and not all.
Ms. Fraser?
I appreciate you, Ms. Chair. Only thing I wanted to say, I think that's, everyone received the email, my response on the email, and that's the reason why I said what I said. I wish that we could have had our, our legal team here today if we were gonna have this discussion.
Well, it's not a discussion, they're just making statements.
Duly noted.
He will be here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mid-month meeting.
And words of my chair, moving right along.
Mr. Chairman, I listened to Mr. Stevens. I believe the legal matter that was discussed in there, and I was the one that brought up the order to go into that, to let this board know that since my findings, whether it's true or false, is a little bit muddy with some folks, that I retain my own attorney. So, I have, my own attorney will be looking at it instead of just the county attorney. That was the legal matter that I wanted everybody to understand, and that's the reason I called for executive session. So there was a legal matter, and I have retained my attorney. The issue about other, I don't know of any other, and it may be that I don't look at them as often as I should, but I didn't know that we had another constitutional offer that was misusing tax dollars. I mean, any way around it, that wasn't the reason I called for the meeting. I just had heard that there was some issues out here, I had gotten phone calls, and I wanted to make sure that I have my own attorney, because I've been through one of these before. That's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, I was absent at the last meeting when y'all had the executive session, but as a commissioner, and that check supposedly being from the Board of Commissioners, I was not invited to the presentation, I probably wouldn't win anyway, because it actually wasn't from the Commissioners. And I do want to make it clear, that was not me in the picture, that was a Board of Education member, Carol Geyet. A lot of people thought that was me. I was not at there, I was not there, but I just wanted to make that clear also. Also, as, you know, and I don't know how far we want to go in, into it tonight, but anyway, I want to make that clear, and I'll, I'll hold my other comments for when the attorney's here.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. LCPC, Ms. Marty Sanchez.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here to present the cottages on Carter Phase 1 preliminary plat. This is a development by Waltherville Properties, which is one of the Dryden Holdings. It is designed by Emisac Engineering, and it is 69 lots for single-family dwellings on a total of 83 acres, and it is Zoned R12, and located on Bill Carter Road, right at the end where it meets up with Louis Frazier. Next slide, please. Oh, I can do that, I'm sorry, I'm so used to City Hall. So...
They got you spoiled?
It does, someone to switch the slides for you.
We're gonna spoil you over here at the counter.
That's good. So this is the total 163-acre parcel, the Phase 1 is actually only on, as I mentioned, 83 acres, about half of this parcel. This is the approximate limits of Phase 1. So, the, what's highlighted in green are the house lots, there'll be, at this point, only one access off of Bill Carter Road. It'll loop around, there'll be one full cul-de-sac off of this looping road, and there will be two temporary turnarounds for connection to future phases. Dedications to the county include drainage easement for these two ponds, and then there are culverts here for this drainage easements to get the street drainage into those ponds. And there's also a temporary easement, drainage easement, for this pond here and this culvert here, and that is because the land that this, these two items are on are actually not being platted yet, so they're temporary until the next phase, when this will be part, this will be part of the land that is platted, and then they'll become permanent easements. There are two tracks here that are being dedicated to the HOA. This one here is strictly all wetlands, and this one over here does have some good land along the road and some wetlands as part of that as well. So other dedications to the county include about a mile of new streets, and then the water and stormwater improvements, because this will be served by the Liberty County Public Water System, and then the drainage easements that I mentioned. The HOA will be dedicated, those two tracks of land, about two and a half acres, and then those two detention pond tracks of about 12 and a half acres. This preliminary plat was before the planning commission last month, at which they recommended for cottages on Carter Phase 1 approval of the preliminary plat with standard conditions. Those are the standard conditions. We do have an engineer here from Emisac Engineering, if you have any questions.
I've got some questions, so have, Mr. Chair. Okay. For her, for Marty, I thought.
Marty, yeah, go back. Back up.
Which slide, sir?
Back your slides way up.
Father Engineer, too.
All right, I heard you mentioned everything except one thing.
Yes, sir.
Where's the cemetery?
You back?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Elliot Wilson with Emisac Engineering. So, I will show you on the laser pointer here. Okay, so it's, if you can see it on your screen, kind of where I'm hovering, there's a patch of trees here. See that? So that, what we've, we've gone out there myself personally, and we've identified a couple headstones on this site. What we've done is put at a minimum 125 feet away from each headstone. So what we have here is captured, it's a little, I want to say it's about acre and a half of land, which will be preserved, there's gonna be a fence placed around it, and it will be left undisturbed. So, what we've done, we've just kind of stayed away from that area. Everything else in this phase has been cleared. Cleared as in trees, and cleared as in walk-through, and made sure there's no historical sites or headstones. What we'll also do is kind of the same process we did here, and continue to investigate as we work our way through the next phase, but to date, what we've identified in the field has been preserved, and will be taken care of in the next phase.
How close is that closest, the closest house gonna be to that cemetery? Right there?
So, as far as the property line of what we're gonna call the cemetery, it would abut that property line. As far as a headstone, no closer than 125 feet. It's amazing, actually, out there, other than all the snakes we saw, there's some real beautiful trees that are gonna be left in place, and really, it's, it's one of those, it's not gonna be advertised as a cemetery, it's gonna be fenced off, private facility owned by Dryden at that time. So nobody's gonna be able to really go in there or do anything, other than if they have relatives or something, some we can trace back, we can grant them access to view that, but we're not gonna allow the kids in the neighborhood and such to go in there where kids could be kids. Yes, sir.
So no, so no Halloween parties, or anything?
No Halloween parties. No, sir. We're respecting, we don't want any bad juju, so we're staying, staying out of there.
What about the, now, where is the Bill Carter Road at?
So, it's to the north kind of east corner where all these easements we're looking.
Right here. Okay, so you come in by the existing pond that's up front near the Bill Carter Road, correct?
Correct, just right past that, yes, sir.
All right, okay.
And we're, we're leaving everything in place, there's gonna be buffer there, along with the buffer along the residential neighborhood that everybody back.
Buffer is mighty thin, because I can, I ride through, I live in that area.
Yes, sir.
I ride through that way every day, I can see every time a high hoe dump dirt.
Okay, yeah, so anywhere where, when the preliminary, or when the zoning was done back when, everywhere on the north side of this screen here, where we put in the minutes that a 40-foot buffer would remain, it's intact. We went out there and flagged it with our surveyor to make sure everything was left undisturbed.
You gonna allow it to grow up?
Yes, sir.
All right. Marty, you mentioned the county would, Julie would maintain the, not maintain, inspect the pond, the retention, the detention, I get those mixed up all the time. Joey, how do we, how do we do, we, we have an inspection scheduled, oh, I see you.
He has to, he, he'll put them on his regular maintenance schedule to do them.
He, he who?
Clint.
Clint?
Yes.
Clint does, that's the present procedure when we can?
For the ones we have.
Yeah, do we have very many?
We don't.
We don't? Okay.
But, Mr. Chairman, also about the additional roads, that's going to go to Clint, too. And I say to this board, just keep in mind, we keep adding more to Clint, but we're not adding any more personnel. So, we need to take a serious look at that.
And remind me, Marty, how many lots again?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, okay, okay. What, um, uh, what size houses are you envision?
With, with these being larger lots, we expect larger houses. I'm not, I don't work with Dryden, but I would say anywhere from seventeen-hundred to twenty-four-hundred square feet.
Okay, something that was asked of me, and I told him I didn't think it was in our ordinance, Joey, that, you know, when, when, some communities have, when a subdivision is built to a certain size, and, and they require some public amenities, like a little park, little neighborhood park kind of thing, you know, i- in them, is that something we ever talked about?
You've talked about it, but you didn't, I mean, it's not in the ordinance. We'd have to explore whether you could still require it or not.
Like a little playground for the kids, that kind of thing.
Right.
Let's put that on our to-talk agenda. Since you asked me that a while back, I told Marty, I know.
I will say, under PUD zoning, they are required by a certain amount of, I forget what the amount is. Green spaces, it increases the more lots that you have, green space, and the green space...
His, his attorney, I know his face.
It's green space that has to be common area, and it also has to provide recreation, some kind of recreation, a playground, a walking trail, whatever, but, you know, but it's only required for PUD zoning.
So, some of the PUDs we approved in the county has those?
Claude has some in, in his subdivisions, Griffin Park does, for sure, but that's at the city.
But I know the county has them.
It, it does in the PUD. But you could also require it in subdivisions of some size, if you want to put it in your ordinance to do that. Can I ask Marty one quick question? Where, where do we hit the threshold for the second access point?
Hundred-and-twenty lots.
Okay, thank you.
We just missed it? All righty.
Just another question. I, I, I know we're looking at, uh, this is just approval for the first initial phase. How many phases are, are we looking at in total?
So, we, we will design it in two phases, but speaking with the Dryden team, they're going to go ahead and probably split this, you could almost look at the north side of the retention pond in the middle, and so they'll probably split it two, maybe even three ways in developing this actual first phase. So, I think in the grand scheme of things, there'll probably be six some odd phases that will come back for final plat, piece by piece.
So, so the total lots in this, in this particular subdivision is going to be, how many?
Hundred and what?
It's, I want to say, if, if we have sixty-nine here, there's probably around a hundred-ten, a hundred-and-fifteen. It's, it's been quite some time since I've looked at the whole thing, but we are providing a second entrance in, in the next phase.
Where's that second entrance going to be at?
So, you can... Yeah, so if you see where those two out parcels are, it's coming in somewhere right here on Louis Frazier, kind of at the midpoint.
So, that's right on the curve?
Yes, sir.
At the stop sign?
At the stop sign.
What kind of impact is this going, traffic is going to have on this? Don't tell me none, now.
Minimal, minimal impact. We know that Bill Carter just received an overlay, it's brand-new road, said no problems there, we expect everybody else, but I would think majority of the traffic is coming out on Bill Carter taking a left and working their way back towards the highway, so on that new roadway.
Have you been down there, oh, twenty-four hours a day, certain time in the day to watch it?
No, sir, I, I have been down there.
I have. Yes, and y'all, and you know, I wish you all would quit saying all the time it doesn't have a, these buildups doesn't have an impact, traffic problem, it does create a traffic problem.
Sounds like we better put some more money in Bill Carter and Louis Frazier.
Take, take a look at it more seriously.
Yes, sir, we'll do just that.
But, with that kind of, Joey, that, that comes under, who, when, when we do our inspections, our pre-approval, who, who looks at that kind of thing? Does Trent look at that for the county, since it's?
You talking about the roadway, since I?
Yes, sir, since, in Paxton, yeah, okay. So, that's all safe, God, we have, I need to look at it to, to put up any red flags that, uh...
You're not going to do a good job at it?
I don't, don't, let's not be personal, now.
Well, it's not personal, Mr. Chairman, it's what I see with my own eyes.
Because he has a certain criteria that they...
Mine doesn't count.
No, I'm not saying that, but...
I mean, but, but the reality is, I, I know, since I've been up here, we, we've been spending a couple dollars on Louis Frazier and Bill Carter for infrastructure, so, but whatever we need to do.
But I agree with the, with the, your observation about the curve right there, because it, that be, that be between the stop sign and the church, in there somewhere. We're looking at for Phase, Phase Two. Joey, now, this is going to help our customer base for our water?
Absolutely.
Service?
Yes, sir.
I saw, I'm looking at the kind of a blue-green screen you got there, and it shows property on Walther Road, it cro, this property crosses, um, a little triangle right here at Louis Frazier and, and Bill Carter. Go, did you, on the, on this purple one right here, it's showing the road splitting a lot there appears to be, Louis Frazier and Walther Road, which is the little cut through there. I just wondered, is that part of that parcel? It is? So, how much is that little triangle right there, how many, do you know?
Yes, sir.
Do you see the purple? This one right here is what I'm looking at, Joey, I don't, I don't know if somebody hit it with their marker, but it's that, that one right there?
I got you.
You look, look at the intersection, Louis Frazier.
Right here. That corner right there.
I guess that was part of the track when it was, when it was, uh, bought, it was part of it on that side of the road.
Yes, sir, but...
But it's not built enough, big enough for building a lot or anything like that?
No, sir, there's no plans to develop that triangular piece.
What about the triangle piece down there at the, uh, pasture number one-four-two-zero-six-four? That's sitting right in between that? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Let me see if I can get my pointer to work. Better went there, no. Right, we see where the square, the cutout at?
With these two?
Right there, mhm, what about that piece right there?
I, I don't know if I fully understand your question, sir.
What are y'all intentions of doing with that little piece that doesn't belong to you, do you, are you going to try to purchase that or leave it like it is?
No, no, sir, I, I don't believe there's any plans in the works to purchase those pieces. Same thing, we're leaving the forty-foot buffer around those two properties.
Is that big enough for someone to build something on?
I'm, I'm sure they could, you could put a couple, yes, sir.
Right there.
You're talking about the two out parcels that don't belong to Dryden?
Right, yeah.
Yes, sir. There, Dryden has no plans or intentions to do that, but I'm sure somebody could come in and develop those.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
When this, when we did, redid Bill Carter Road years ago and put this, moved it over to stop sign, did that open space convert it back to the property owner? Or does it still belong to the county?
I don't remember, Commissioner Stevens, I'll be honest with you. But I'll be glad to look it up and see who, you know, who it's titled.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir, I know, yes, sir, I know right what you're talking about. I'll look and see who owns it, who, who's got the thing to it now.
I know Ms. Simmons owns a piece of it. I was just curious about that.
I'll look it up and see, that far parcel, closest to Louis Frazier, is showing a land hook on the map, so according to that, Bill Carter would split those two parcels, I'm talking and greet to you. Basically, Bill Carter was splitting this parcel and this one.
Mhm, it's two, two different owners.
It was a land hook there, so it's, um, at least on the map, but I, I'll definitely look it up tomorrow, collect your, yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair, you ready for a motion?
Ready, sir.
Chair, I make a motion that we go ahead and accept a recommendation from LCPC.
Second.
Motion, second, we approve the, the recommendation preliminary plat for cottages on Carter Phase One. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please, approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from that.
One abstention, okay, all right, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marty. I really want to appreciate, well, Mark has made the presentation, whoever's responsible for ensuring that cemetery is protected, really appreciate it.
You know, we need to get that on historical.
Need to find out what the name of it is, what, what was it called, or whatever, homework for you.
I'll dig a little deeper, if I don't find nobody.
But, but I have to say, um, I think you would agree that even in all of our rezoning processes, every time we've asked the contractor to work with us, with appropriate buffers, they've all stepped up to the plate, we appreciate that, from what I'm hearing and seeing on TV, that it always happens, so, but it is happening in Liberty County, we're proud of that, so that people's properties are protected, and the, the developer gets to build, as well as the public gets to be protected, especially in this case with the cemetery being there. Thank you so much for doing that.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to note that I abstained from that.
You did? Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Did we get enough to pass it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All righty.
But, I guarantee you, two parcels next to there, probably going to be the last one, so, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but...
Or discount it. I have my observations, too.
Well, I know when we talked about that, Mr. Stevens had brought up that he knew there was a cemetery in there, he never did find them boots, he was telling me, don't find them boots, and, and I, I think you told me there was an airport back there, and I looked for it, too.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Must have grown up in Palmetto.
Single engine. His name was, uh, Red Cat, he used to fly his plane in there twice a week.
What year was this? Observation while Ms. Kitchens come out, riding around the camp.
I just wanted to know if I was around there.
Been riding around the county, campaigning with some other folk, I see some of them out there, too, man, they have more yellow signs up in Liberty County now for rezoning than I've seen in a long time. On, on, I have one nineteen, I saw two yellow signs, what's going, don't tell me what's going, but it's a lot of, obviously, it's a lot of development.
A matter of timing, when they come in, there are seven, eleven rezoning applications on the agenda next month.
I, I, I've seen them everywhere, places I didn't expect to see them. Get ready, get ready, get ready.
More houses, more people, and that mean they bringing kids, so y'all know where I'm going.
Speaking of kids, Boys and Girls Club, Ms. Martha Kitchens, you want to come in? And talk to us, good to see you. Worked with this lady for many, many years.
I know.
Okay, Commissioner and Chairman, thank you all for letting me come and talk to you tonight, and I'm talking to you about something that's very dear to my heart, and I hope you will know that everything I say to you is heartfelt, and that I'm requesting your support in this. So, what I want to talk to you about is the Boys and Girls Club of Liberty County. Now, I'm sure you've heard of it, I'm sure it's, it's been brought before you before, but what I want to tell you is that we are so proud of what we're, we've been doing with these kids, we feel like we're making great achievements. I don't know how much you all know, but I would like to invite you, whenever you want to, give us a call, come by and look at our facility, and we can tell you in great detail what's going on. Sometimes I'm amazed at the things that are going on, and I'm a board member, and I'm supposed to know these things, but wonderful things are happening. We're right now in the Jersey Bacon Elementary School as our home base right this minute. Excuse me, my allergies are acting up. We have property that's been donated to us, but we don't have buildings yet, and so we'll be in the Jersey Bacon Class, um, school for a while. Our programs are going so well that we have started to expand. Now, our first expansion was, and we have, wait a minute, let me check my numbers here, because I want to be sure I'm giving you the right information. Right now, our enrollment is at a hundred-and-twenty-five, and these are kids coming into the club, and we've got forty more who've started enrollment, but they haven't finished all their paperwork yet, and so that's why they're not actively involved with the club. But our first expansion was when we went out to Fort Stewart, and we're out there one night per month, one Friday night per month. We're working at the teen club with the teenagers there, and what we're doing there is teaching them life skills and workforce readiness. Now, you all know that these kids coming up are not ready for the workforce, and that they're sadly deficient in life skills, and this is what we hope to do, and we hope that we're going to make all these kids wonderful, productive citizens, that's our goal, that's our plan, and we're working hard toward achieving that. Now, we are ready to do another expansion, and this one is a little bit different. There are kids whose primary goal in life is athletics, that's all they see, that's all they want. A lot of these kids are down on the east end of the county, Riceboro and Midway, Commissioner Stevens, I think this is your district, right, down Midway and Riceboro? So, um, what we plan to do is outreach. Now, the kids who come into the club, it's like, I, I don't know, it's the way I did my children at home, they come in, they get a snack, they sit down, they do their homework, they need tutoring, they get tutoring. Then they can do activities, sometimes that's indoor activities, but most of the time it's outside, because we'd like to get these kids outside and active. Then we give them a hot meal before they go home, so we've addressed their brains, their bodies, and particularly their tummies and their, and their minds, so that they are ready to go home, if they're going home to a place where they don't have a meal for supper, they've got one already, and I have even seen the staff send plates home with the children for those who are at home and didn't come into the club. So, what we're planning to do is we're going to go down to Midway and Riceboro, and these kids now are not involved in the recreation program, so I don't want you to think we're in competition with the recreation department, because I think they have a wonderful program, and we definitely don't want to interfere with them, and we don't want to compete with them.
Thank you for saying that, Ms. Kitchens.
So, what we're going to do is we're going to go down there, and these kids that are involved with the amateur athletics program, like the traveling teams is what I'm talking about, there's four or five that work with these kids down on the east end of the county. We want to go down there, and, oh, and we're already in contact with these people, we want to go down there, if you can't, if you can't get Mohammed to come to the mountain, you take the mountain to Mohammed, okay? So, we're going to go down there, we're going to sit with these kids, we're going to be sure they have a safe environment, because most of them don't, most of them are roaming the streets when they're not at athletic practice, so we're going to give them a safe environment, we're going to work with them on their homework, and then those that we can get to come into the club will have the other benefits of the club, like hot meal before you go home and a snack when you come in. Now, to do this, we're, we're going to need more staff, of course, and more facilities to do it, and we need to get our sports program off the ground, and we're, we're, we've started working on that. These kids need to be safe, and they need to have somebody looking after their education, and frequently... And frequently, in homes that are not financially well-off, you will find that education is not important to the parents. And so therefore, it's not important to the kids, because it hasn't been made important. We want to make it important, because this is the way we're going to bring our kids up to be productive citizens, and hopefully be productive citizens right here in Liberty County. So, along those lines, what we're asking for is thirty-five thousand dollars from the CPP funds. Under the Community Partnership Program, we can receive youth upward mobility and quality recreation for healthy futures. And once again, I want to tell you that we're not in competition with the recreation department, because these kids cannot be a part of the recreation department. Mostly because they don't have transportation. Now, what we will provide, if we can get them to come into the club outside of us going out there, we will provide bus transportation from their schools to our club, which we do for a lot of kids already. And then again, they will be eligible for the same benefits, snack when they get there, help with their homework, tutoring if they need it, and a warm meal before they go home. In addition to the sports, we're using the sports really as a hook, I want you to know, to get them to come into the club. These kids won't be a part of the recreation department, lots of them, because they don't have transportation to come into town. And the recreation department doesn't have the resources and the ability to go out and get kids to bring them in. They use, and, and I know this so well, because I raised four children in this community, and I was a volunteer with every one of my children. And, and there's so many kids who come in that there's no way to go out and bring in others. And so what we want to do is go out and reach those who cannot come in. Any questions? And don't make them hard ones, don't make them hard ones.
What, what's the fund you referenced, the C, I mean, did I write it, did I write the CPP?
CPP.
CPP.
It's the, um, Community Partnership Program. And, and the Boys and Girls Club get funds from this program from almost every municipality.
Except Liberty County.
I'm sorry.
We just getting started, so we just not coming to them.
Okay. This is, this is, this is, as Edna says, we're getting started.
So where do those funds come from?
Yeah.
I, I've never heard of.
These funds are, these are grant, aren't they grants?
Oh, who, are you, are you asking for us to apply for them?
Hard questions.
No, we, when you said it CPP, I.
Are we, are we applying?
CPP is a Community Partnership Program.
Good evening, thank you all so much for allowing us to come.
And y'all all know, my friend, Anna Waltharve, she didn't tell you her name.
Okay. When we enrolled in Boys and Girls Club after the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty meeting we had in this room, we, in August, went, uh, and did a contract, according to Boys and Girls Club of America, what we had to do. We did a contract with Frank Allen Boys and Girls Club in Savannah, and they're teaching us how to do what. And, and their teachers, we understand that there's a program in Boys and Girls Club of America called CPP, and that's Community Partnership Program. And that's what we call monies that come from the government entity for the location of the club. And so that's why we here for you to be community partners for us, to help us with our expansion, and I'm trying not to go into anything that Martha's already said.
And help us to, to, um, help these kids to become productive citizens. And this is, you know, if, we have to take care of these kids, we have to do it, because these are our future. And if we don't bring them up to be the kind of citizens we want them to be, then it's our fault if they're not.
So, the thirty-five thousand dollar figure you quoted, that's, what's the basis?
I'm sorry, what?
Gas, gasoline, more materials and supplies.
And more help, and sports programs are not cheap to get off the ground, and once you get them going, they're okay. Like, right this minute, we got a scoreboard, I need five thousand dollars for, if any of y'all have an extra five thousand, and Edna's telling me to, an extra five thousand dollars laying around.
She's really helping you.
We, 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 we want, we don't want y'all to think that we're not working hard out there in the community, because we, um, we have an initiative going where we are, almost have all ten thousand dollars for two scoreboards in our gym, okay?
We, we. We almost have it.
We almost have it, so we're not asking there. And we have someone on the hook for a soccer and football scoreboard for our field down there in Waltharve. We have four AAU traveling teams who are working with us, a lot of them kids are already signing up all the paperwork's in. And as soon as we get the contract back from the lawyer, the whole harmless one, so that they won't sue us if the kids get hurt on the ground out there or in the gym. As soon as we get that back, then Q, the five Q A, or whatever that number is, letter is, they're gonna start practicing on our field in Waltharve. We have, Martha, you have to listen, we have five, we have four groups that are already.
Here they are, right here.
You're gonna have to read your writing.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm not sure we need all that, that, that detail, but sort of, go back, so you're asking the thirty-five requests, you, you asking it from the county and all the cities, or they're just a county request?
That's just the county one, we will be going to the city, it's a, it's another.
It's another source of funding when we go to the municipalities.
So this one, the CPP fund is.
Community Partnership Program.
Yeah, is strictly a county.
We're asking the county for that one.
We're asking the county.
In the cities where the houses are usually more closely, it's a neighborhood type program that we're, we will be addressing the cities for.
So this is your formal request?
This is my formal request.
One thing that we have not addressed is the, and she did say it, the life skills that we get the opportunity to work with, with these kids on.
Well, put that in writing, um, we will begin our budgeting process very soon, but I'm, I'm glad you're here, I'm glad it's live, because, uh, Ms. Waltharve, you said up here, you know what it's like on, on this side, uh, people are constantly asking about the millage rates in Liberty County, you know, what comprises it? And why does it keep going up, so on and so forth, you've been there, done that, constantly. So put your request in writing, and I think you made a good, uh, plea, lack of a better word to it.
A good begging.
And then when we go through the budgeting process, we'll put it on our, on our list of considerations.
And we're most grateful, and while you're doing it, just remember that more and more houses are going up, that mean more and more children, families are coming.
And that means more and more at-risk children.
And they're looking for.
Yeah, I don't want to get into much of that, because we've been, uh, we've given it, I think, fair discussion, but you know, we, uh, when you say the Riceboro Youth Center is there, because we open the Sam Harris Gym, so, so there may be some, uh, what's, what's the word, crossover, uh, almost competing for the same children, what I'm saying.
These right here.
Our, no, these children that we are going after cannot, most of them, it's a transportation issue, they can't come into the recreation department. So our kids are not, they're not recreation department kids, and that was what I wanted to be sure that you all understood. We are not competing with the recreation department.
I'm, I'm, I'm in business, and that's what other business owners that's in my business tell me, that we're not competing.
Yeah.
But.
They, they can be a part of recreation, Board of Education, the school district, they have cutoff, they can only see so many. And even with recreation department, they can't see every child. And, and for some reason or another, the parent might not meet the, the demands of what's required for the, the recreation or Board of Education. They might miss a deadline, but every child wants to participate, so if they miss those, then we are third possibility for them. Okay, 'cause, but we do say what we offer is above and beyond what recreation and Y WCA.
Put that in a pretty little packet and send it to us.
Okay.
We shall.
Ms. Martha, Ms. Kitchen?
Miss, Miss Kitchen?
Come back up to the mic, just, yeah, come back up to the mic a minute, come back up to the mic.
Oh, to the mic.
Yes, sir.
When you referenced the kids in the Riceboro.
And Midway.
Midway, how did you come up with that?
Because.
Should it be all, should it be all Liberty County, instead of just picking out a pocket?
Say that again, what's your question again?
Okay.
Hold on, Martha.
No, when she referenced kids in Midway and Riceboro, how did she come up with just those?
With just Riceboro and Midway.
It's, it's the rule of more than Riceboro and Midway, those are two that.
But it's down on the east end of the county.
There's some of them around here too, we, because we got some in Gum Branch, and we got a lot in Gum Branch, because we're gonna be zeroing in on them all. As we pick up, because right now the school buses, our bus is picking up from Lyman Hall and from Louis Fraser, and Waldo Path is more, because we're studying the whole dynamics out there. And we definitely, especially as, um, they start football and basketball at these different places, wherever that AAU coach is, and he's meeting, his kids come, might come from Midway, they might come from Riceboro, they might come from Waltharve, or wherever. They, we will go to them wherever they got their huddle, is that how, because that's how they do it in, in Savannah, they go to them where they got their huddle. But if they have a problem, they need to come in for something that we have, we even have psychologists who are ready to deal with them on counseling issues and stuff like that, just like they got in Savannah. They work closely with us, I don't know a whole lot about what's going on in the club, but they keep their finger on it. They make sure that the staff get the training and screening before they hit that door to work with the kids.
Right, our, our staff, they all are CPR certified, first aid certified, trained how to recognize signs and symptoms of child abuse, and also trained in how to deal with these kids.
And how to do those basic Boys and Girls Club programs, because they are some set programs already researched and prepared for these children. We're not out there saying we're gonna.
Yeah, we're not, we're not up there making it up.
Let me get Commissioner Fraser in real quick, then I gotta come in.
All right, uh, I, I, I just have a few questions, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand this CPP, so.
CPP is.
Right, right.
Let Mr., Mr., uh.
No, we, we don't need to add.
Right, right, no, no, nothing else, right.
Okay, we'll, we'll put it in writing.
That's fine.
Would I get it?
Google, I, yeah, I, I'll figure that out.
You might, you might not find it in Google, because it is of.
You can't find it in Google, because when I first heard it, I Googled it, and you can't find it.
Okay.
But you could, you could feel free to call Mr. Green, because that's our corporate headquarters, who do the training and stuff, and I might, I might explain it to you.
Right, no, no problem, I, I could do my research, I, I figured it out, find a way or make one. Uh, so, but also, I hear that we're saying that we're not competing with recreation. This is, I guess, more, more of a statement, uh, not just for you all, but for my, my fellow board members, uh, with me being the liaison for the recreation department. And I've said in the past that we have not increased our budget on that side to be able to, to help our recreation department expand. I, 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 I agree with what they're saying, but me personally, uh, if my neighbor leaves a trash can out, I will help get the trash can. But you know who trash can I'm bringing in first is mine. So what I'm saying is, we need to take care of home first, before we, we step out and do anything else. And then, you know, the requests about money, uh, we, we, we'll talk about that later. I, I think everybody know what, where I'm going with, about that. But also, I have a question about the statistics, I know, I know you were saying that, you know, on the east end, you know, lack of transportation, and I'm, I'm assuming lack of resources. And you know, I, I, I kind of, I kind of grew up out there, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, uh, with the lack of transportation. And also, I know, just like, what, what we were discussing, we've spent millions of dollars on, on recreation on the east end to make sure that, that, because it was lacking, you know? But we, we made sure that, you know, that we were gonna take care of that, and we just built a, a new gymnasium out there, how, how much money was that? I'm sorry?
But you won't see them all.
Your kids?
With all the respect, we, none of us always see them all, I mean, that, that's, that's, that's just the reality.
Right.
You know, I, it doesn't matter how small the community is, or how large a community is, and everyone is needed, and I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that. Uh, actually, I sit on probably one of those, uh, other boards with one of the AAU, well, teams that you were talking about as well. Right, so what, what, I get it, but then also that goes back to, if we give you this money, w- why can't we, why can't the next IE skills or anyone come and request?
Please, please.
We all say we're different, but.
Sir, I, 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 excuse me.
With, with all the respect, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is.
I do apologize.
It, it's fine, but what, but what I'm saying is this, Ms. Chair, is this like anything else? If, if we start giving out money to one organization, what, how, how, how do, how do we turn that, that faucet off? That was just a question that, that I have with that, but, but more importantly, like I said, I've, you know, I've, I've been a supporter for y'all from, from day one, that's not the question. But the thing is, with me being the liaison with the recreation department, knowing that we promised, uh, that department some extra manpower that we have not given them yet, how can we do something else and we not take care of home? That's the only thing I have to say, but I appreciate y'all, I'm a supporter, but I, we, we gotta take care of home.
Can, can I just ask, answer one thing, Mr. Fraser? Commissioner Fraser, um, the recreation department utilizes volunteers, 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 and, you know, and I support that, that is not, I mean.
Oh, no, 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 we have, we have staff over there.
That's a bad thing, but sometimes you can't get enough volunteers. I know kids who did not make teams because there was not enough coaches.
I understand, but, but what I'm saying is, we have facilities that we have part-time and full-time employees that we, that our recreation department came and requested from us. So we could be able to support certain, uh, events and everything, that we're shorthanded over there. Just, just like Commissioner Stevens was saying, that we're shorthanded with the road department, we're shorthanded in a lot of places in dealing with our, uh, employees. So that's the only thing I'm saying, I'm, I'm not against what you all are doing, I'm just saying, before, before I go cut my neighbor's grass, I'm gonna make sure my grass is cut, that's the only thing I'm saying.
I understand.
So there's, there's some stuff internally that we need to, to make sure that we're, we have everything together before we go out, that's, that's just.
And I understand and I appreciate that, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Send the request forward.
Okay, thank you.
And let us have our time to review.
When you read it, you see the difference.
Absolutely, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, property and casualty insurance, Mr. Bob Seville. Ah, he's coming via zoom.
Here we go.
Hold up, he, he, you changed something in, in your office? I don't remember the bird, but carry on.
Yes, uh, how, how, did you want to give a little intro here?
Other, other than to say not much, Bob, it's, it's that time of the year, again, for property casualty insurance, we discussed this a little bit at your work session, uh, about some different things we're proposing this year in order to, uh, take a different path on what we're doing for property and casualty that we're seeing larger counties starting to do now. Be progressive and try to take some control over market changes, rather than let the market just totally change us.
Okay, uh, and that's, uh, what we are going to be moving towards, you recall last year how the insurance just shot up through the roof because of our losses and so forth. So, uh, this year, we're going to more of a self-insured retention. And what I would like to do is show you a paragraph of where we were last year, and then, uh, then we'll, uh, go from there to share the screen and show you what it looks like for this year, and then go into some details of it. And it's a lot to digest, uh, and then we'll come back to these bar graphs to review those in a, uh, just sort of as a summary. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to share this screen right here. And this screen is, uh, uh, what we've got, and by the way, I, I planned to come down there, but we decided that it's easier to. And by the way, I, I had planned to come down there, but we decided that it's easier to, uh, for me to be here and to show you these screens. And, um, that way we can flip around if you have questions and have everything available. And then I'll, I'll be down there on the 18th. But this is last year's insurance that we renewed. And, uh, you'll see it's, uh, uh, 2.5 million and the deductibles were very low. Those look high, but they were low in most counties. And, uh, and we have about 3 million limits on these policies here. And, uh, a million limit on your automobile. And this is your property where we had 100 million limit and we self-insured the rest of it up to the 200 million. So, uh, this year's graph looks a little bit different. This year, we're going to be retaining $300,000 on your general liability and your automobile liability and taking the physical damage up to $25,000. And then our property will stay just about the same as it was last year. With the exception, instead of $100 million, uh, of insurance, we're going to carry 25 million and rely on FEMA when we have a FEMA event. And then on our public officials in law, we're going to keep those on deductible policies. It's the same deductible we had last year, 25,000. And the law went up to 75,000. As most law policies, you, you hear about all the events that occur. Uh, and, uh, this is driving the deductible up in the law. And, uh, this is our side group here. So that's just a quick overview to, uh, show you a roadmap of where we're going. Now, what I would like to show you next is this is our proposed coverage for this year. And, uh, uh, we've worked real hard with, uh, with the staff and with Joey to, uh, to get this thing put together. And I think it's, it's really one of the, it's much better than we expected it's going to be. So up here, we've got the $300,000, uh, the, excuse me, this is a $100,000 limit on the general liability. And, uh, we have a much lower premium when you combine all these together. So this is your automobile and your general liability premium is right about half a million dollars. And you can see that, that last year it was way over a million dollars. So we'll be self-insuring these and your automobile will have a $300,000 limit. And vehicles will have a $25,000 deductible. Now, uh, last year, we only insured 12 units and self-insured all the rest of the units. But this year, we've, uh, uh, we were able to pick up 244 units. And that's basically all the units over $25,000 in value. So, uh, when we move down to the law of officials, you can see we're carrying higher limits on these, $3 million. And that is because we, uh, we get into federal lawsuits with those. So, uh, we can sort of rely on sovereign immunity with our general liability. And with our automobile liability, we have a statutory tort cap of $500 if it's one, $500,000 if it's one person, $700,000 if it's more than one person, that'd be per occurrence, and $50 for property damage. So we take the retention we have of 300, we add it to the 450, and we get to the $750,000 tort cap. So what we're trying to do here is not over insure, but just carry the limits of insurance the state requires us to carry. Okay? I'm going to take a breath here. We all probably need one, too. So as we get down, we mentioned the law enforcement liability. We have 3 million limits and that takes us to higher limits if we get into federal court where we don't have the state tort cap that would apply. And, uh, it went from 15 to 75,000 this year. Excuse me. Uh, on the public official, uh, liability and employment practices, we went to the same 3 million because those also have the capability to get into federal court. And we kept the same deductibles over here. Normally, in a self-insured program, you would put these two lines of coverage up under these larger retentions over here that you have on your general liability and auto. But we felt like it was a better arrangement to leave these with the smaller deductibles rather than a self-insured retention where you manage your own claims. Okay? The umbrella we, uh, we had last year is automatically included up here in this 3 million limit. Then we get to the property. The property, uh, has a $25 million limit. Now, we're insuring 199 million, almost 200 million in property. And so the philosophy here is last year, we insured $100,000 worth of property, 100 million. And this year, we're going to go down to 25 million. And the, the philosophy there that we talked back and forth about is that, uh, if we have a FEMA event, FEMA will step in over the 25 million if we don't have insurance coverage. And in most cases, they'll pick up from there. So it avoids us from having to pay these huge property premiums and saves us 500 to 600,000, which we're going to put into a loss fund. Okay? And then this is the cyber liability which stayed the same as last year. Now, uh, the property will point out that, uh, we have, uh, only had about $50,000 in property claims over the last 10 years. So this is what's driving this decision. So if you average that out, we're averaging about $5,000 to $6,000 a year in property claims, but we were paying these huge premiums for our property. So by taking this lower retention, you know, there's always some type of exposure. We can have a tornado or something, but the likelihood of it exceeding the 25 million and not being a FEMA event is very, very low. So, uh, that's, you can see how much this saves us. Now, I'm going to flip over to, uh, what it would look like if we stayed with the same program. And, uh, if we stayed with this same program right here and we still had the same property, I left the same property in here, but if we went back to the same property premiums that were the totals, which is 1,300,000, it gives us a premium of 2.8 million. So if we stayed exactly like we are and we kept the 100 million, we would be at 2.8 million as opposed to this other chart where we're at a million, 491. Okay? So, um, let's go back to the charts we looked at over here. And you'll see that, uh, just in a summary form, we're going to retain, this is 100, 100,000, 100,000 right here. We'll retain 100,000 self-insured retention here and we'll rely on sovereign immunity and there are certain tort claim limitations and keep the million dollar limit. Here, we'll take the 300,000 and we'll carry $450,000 limits. And that'll get us to the $750,000 tort cap. And we'll use our 25,000 physical damage deductible. Here, we have a 25,000 deductible, 5% wind and hail per location with 100,000 per occurrence, uh, limitation. That'd be the minimum we would, our deductible we'd go to. We'll keep 25 million, uh, limits and we'll rely on FEMA here to take care of us above that. These stay relatively the same, 25,000. This goes up to 75,000 and this is the same as last year. So that's a, that's sort of a summary of, of the direction we're going to this. And then we're going to take the difference between these two, the 25, 2.5 we paid last year and the 1.5 this year, and we're going to create a loss fund. And we'll, we'll budget the 2.5 and we'll put the difference into a loss fund. And each year, we'll begin to build that loss fund. So we'll start with a million this year and we'll build that loss fund up. And part of that will go to pay claims, uh, under these retentions. Part of it will go to pay a deductible if we have a big wind event, pay this 5% deductible or some of these other deductibles up here. And the, uh, the plan is that that loss fund will continue to build. And over, we looked retrospectively 10 years, we would build up 10 to 12 million dollars in that loss fund and make the insurance somewhat perpetual so that that loss fund takes care of itself. Now, Joey, would you like to add some?
Is that, is that a common model?
Just a common, just a, just a couple notes. So again, as, as communities of our size and larger have struggled to try to control the insurance increases.
You hear me?
Yes, sir. Yeah, can you hear me? I don't, I don't think. Clint, I don't think it's coming through. Um, that, what they've done is go to a partially self-insured model like this in order to be able to control those costs that are going out of sight.
Hey, I'm not getting anything back.
Put it in the budget for next year.
So.
We, we can hear you.
So, so what we're, what we're trying to do is control those costs. So, so a couple of key things. He, he mentioned FEMA. He used one example for you. Here's basically that deal. FEMA will come in on a catastrophic event, which I mean, if you're going to have an event where you're going to have uh, 15, 20 million dollars in losses, that is normally going to be a FEMA qualified event. I mean, it normally is. It won't be based on your losses alone. It'd be based on a region-wide basis. But, but a, any one loss that exceeds that's catastrophic. Okay? Um, FEMA though, if you carry 100 million in insurance, they're only going to insure you over 100 million. If you carry 25, they're going to insure you above 25. So you're really paying for more insurance than you need. So, so we're trying to settle that back down. But here, here's another key thing, and he mentioned it on the end. It, and you're going to see this in health insurance, what we're going to propose there. It is, we're not proposing that you cut your, that you put the same amount or, or that you take the savings of the million dollars and use them for something else. You're going to have to set up, we're setting up a policy that you'll create an insurance fund. It's going to have a health portion and a, and a P and L portion and basically a P and C portion. And basically, you'll take those differences that you're going to see in these two and you're going to put them into that insurance fund. The insurance fund's going to be dedicated to insurance. Can't pull money out of that fund and use it for another purpose. You set some policy guidelines, almost like you've got your, um, um, undesignated fund balance. And it says, when you accumulate to X and certain things you're allowed to do with the fund, you're going to have to manage that. You're going to have to restrict yourself to that because as Bob points out, what the goal is here is not only to pay any claims that occur out of that savings that you're going to see in that first and subsequent years, but also is to build it up where you don't even have to carry some of these lines of coverage in the future. You'll fund them straight out of that insurance fund. And, and that is the model. That is the new model that's coming, just like the new model that you'll see on the health insurance is coming for what they're trying to do to, to control those costs. So, um, yes, sir. Short answer. Want to make sure I've made those points for y'all, but that is what we're proposing to do. The insurance for news, May 1st, so Bob will be back. These are pretty settled numbers, but there are a couple of, I think, a couple of agencies that have not gotten back with him. So we'll, if, if they're able to get back with him, we see something better from a different agency proposing out there, then, then we'll be able to plug that in a model when it comes back to you in the next meeting. And that's a special market. There are only some that are, are going to insure it, some that not. You may remember last year, unlike what we're seeing this year, we had actually, to get the 100 million dollars, we had to stack it. So we had to go to like four or five companies and they would buy a certain amount, another company buy a certain amount. We're not seeing as much stacking this year. Now, governments in Georgia have the, I think nationwide, have the highest premium that they pay for health insurance. Wind events, coastal, uh, exposure and just the change in the insurance market continue to drive coastal communities up the line. So we've got to do something to control it. This makes the most sense. Again, I think I go back to one thing he said. Over the last five years, we've paid out $56,000 in property coverage. We've paid a million for it each year. So you got to change that model. You got to reserve in order to pay claims that may happen, uh, that are under your deductible limits. But, but I think it's, I think it's a move you need to make. You got to start. And it's, and it's not a short run. It's a five, eight, 10-year run where you're building that program on both sides.
Joey, is this, this, um, what, during the workshop at the airport, this what you talked about, was it, uh, Oak, said Oak Ridge, was it?
No, sir. That's the health insurance piece. Now, now Oak Ridge, I will say, Oak Ridge is, um, is an insurance consortium of groups, uh, that, that Bob has worked with here. We brought Oak Ridge into that side, too. And Bob is used to working with Oak Ridge. Bob didn't work for any of these companies, obviously. He's, he's one of our brokers there. And so he has shopped those lines and talked to Oak Bridge about how to put these models together.
Okay. Thank you.
Here on the news, I saw, um, my cohort from Bryan County indicate that when it comes to repairs in their courthouse, there was an insurance issue as part of that. Uh, we insulated from whatever that is that happened that, according to him, that's what's part of the delay in being able to repair them.
The jail and courthouse.
The other part, he said, was working with, working out with the insurance company.
I, I really don't know. But yes, sir, we're covered. I mean, we're covered on that. Now, under some of these, we, again, the first year you go this route, you're going to save a million dollars. So, I mean, you, you know, you, you've got a, uh, uh, through, you know, I don't remember exactly what it was for that building, but, but you, you would have a larger deductible to pay on that than we got right now. I mean, that is kind of the shift. You're going to reserve that to pay the deductibles if they occur on the front end rather than carrying that high coverage that you might not ever need. But I, but I think, and we've run it through Oak Ridge, too. I mean, we're, we're just, I mean, I think, I think it's something I'd recommend to you.
You know, I'm, I'm thinking to, if I'm wrong, correct me. So this happening really made us take a closer look at the models that we had. Had, had, had the premiums not gone up, we would have pretty much stayed with the. So my point is, so should we then make it part of our protocol every so many years, review the insurance, the health and the casualty to kind of see what's out there, what we knew and, and a better, better deal for us as a, as a commission?
Absolutely. I, I, I think so, too. I think as the markets continue to change, you know, there, there'll be modifications to this. There's no doubt. But every year, you need to start looking, you will look. You'll get a report on those insurance funds and what's out there. They'll be in, in your general ledger. So you're going to see claims paid. You know, that is the other part of going this way is that it, staff is going to pick up some work here, you know, to do that. And, uh, but it, I mean, it, it works. And, uh, you'll get a much closer look at managing your money.
Yeah.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I wanted to ask questions. Is Bob still on here? Did he find?
Is.
You there, Bob?
Yeah.
Okay. The inventory that you're basing this on, this is last year's inventory? Or how, how old is the, the list, Joey? Because you know we've added.
It's recent. Yes, it is recent. We have to get, we had to get updated fixed asset registers with pricing and all the vehicle lists scrubbed, all the employee lists scrubbed, um, fill out new questionnaires about policies and practices. We have to do that every year. So it's brand new.
Okay, so each of the railroad track is a, the same wind zone as the 217? So from 17 on, that's a different wind zone?
Actually, actually now, uh, Southern Building Code, I think, is requiring us and insurance to carry the whole county under the same wind load.
So you, you got Sam Harris Gym that has been redone and we've included that in all of this stuff right here and the fire station?
And EMS.
Fire station will, fire station he knows about, but it'll come online. We talked about the new fire station the other day. And, um, and it, it'll come online also.
Well, I can see what the chairman was talking. Well, I can see what the chairman was talking about, it's something that we need to look at every year and review our inventory. You know, we I guess it was, not long ago, we sold a lot of vehicles, which ought to take some of that off. Now, I know we had to replace it with newer vehicles, but, you know, it's real easy to look at something out there and it's done and we cut the ribbon and we got a sign up there, we forget, oh my gosh, I ain't got no insurance on it. So I think we need to, we need to look close at that, you know. That's all I had to say. It's still too high, Bob, I think we need to cut it a little bit more, I mean, I don't mind telling you if you can cut it.
I'm right there with you. Well, it's gonna be a full-time manager job, but I think we can get it done. And I think at the end of, just like your health insurance, I think at the end of the day, you'll, you'll, glad you went this direction.
Well, I know we have all talked about it, the water issue in the county. We've got one tower that we, you know, basically, that's all we're looking at. We're gonna be adding those things and insurance is gonna have to be put on. Infrastructure, we put it in the ground, we're gonna have to have some type of insurance. So I just don't want us to, I don't want us to lose out on it. And I know it's not, it's hard, Joey, with, with everything you've got piled on your wagon, but it's, it's imperative that we follow up. So you can just go ahead and let your assistant there, he, he's got time.
I was thinking, Joey, who are the in-house gatekeepers on that?
Well, there's several. These two, Teresa does the insurance, and then of course, fixed assets are managed out of finance with Samantha and Kimber. So there's, there's several people that cross to make sure we've got stuff picked up from insurance to fixed assets to everything.
And, and I think that we have the fund set at where it's set aside and it's only dedicated, it's kind of like enterprise, it can only be used for?
It can only, it's only gonna be used for insurance.
Yeah, and hopefully it'll, it'll grow and grow, and you're right, and we can take some other things off. It's a good plan. It's a good plan. Look forward to it working.
I do too.
Well, we, we halfway there. It's not long to fill up.
In this new budget.
Yeah, I mean, really, truly, we don't never know where we're gonna go there, but.
So Bob will be back, he'll be here, actually, at the next meeting next week for a final. And then, you know, that'll be an action item for you to consider, because it does renew, we have to sign the policies before May first.
Will you be here early enough, Bob, for some of us can come in and kind of, you know, this is a little hard to talk to you, not.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll be there plenty early.
Okay. You're staying at Joey's lake house?
Yeah.
Only if it rains.
I've asked three times, he hasn't said yes yet.
Go ahead and keep under the mat.
Joey.
Yes, sir.
Could you get Bob to send this to us, so we can kind of look at it again, so I can get much more confused than what I am?
That'd be great. Yeah, Clint's actually got the slides.
I have to tell you, this confuses some of the best insurance agents. So if you're, if you're not quite sure about all this and it gets a little confusing, don't feel bad.
Bob, if you would, just, I know you, you're, you're showing those slides live, but if you can just forward me those, the spreadsheet and two differentials on the bar graphs, that'd be great.
Basically, basically you're adjusting your deductibles.
Basically, we're adjusting.
Based on history.
Correct, and we're not insuring as high on some of the property. The property, that is really what's causing it.
And you recommend keeping the same premium amount, but setting that aside, so much of that aside to build that fund up, so that we'll have that in case, praise the Lord, nothing happens.
Well, to pay out some of the deductibles in case, yes.
And then you try to increase that over time.
Right. That's right.
That's a good model.
You know, y'all did a great job this year on the automobile. Remember how the auto claims were so bad last year? You know, they look at a five to ten-year cycle, but I don't, Joey, I don't think we have one liability claim.
Well, Bob, let's, let's, don't talk about that.
Be real quiet about it.
Come here earlier, let's just.
Thank you, Mr. Bob, looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you, sir.
You're soon.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Joey, if you share those slides with the commissioners.
I will, thank you, sir.
But I think the formula is pretty.
I think it'll work.
Agreement to conduct municipal election for the city of Midway, Georgia.
Yes, sir, as you know, one of the Midway City Councilmen is running for countywide office, so it will require a special election to be held in the city of Midway. And it will be held, though, in conjunction with the regular election on November fifth. So, but this is an agreement to conduct that election for them. And it's the same model that you've seen before.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Since this is gonna be held in conjunction with another election, it won't be no cost to Midway? Okay.
Should not be.
Do we need a motion?
Same precincts, all that, sir. Yeah, I need a motion.
Yes, I make a motion, we approve the agreement.
Second.
With the Midway.
Second, we approve the agreement to conduct the municipal election to finish the unexpired seat for Councilman Malcolm Williams. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Look forward to that. Also appreciate the Board of Elections for having the little contingents that's set aside for these kind of things, so it works. And it's great to be able to do it with the November election. All right, appointments, Liberty County Democratic Election Board?
I believe you furnished a copy of an email from, to Maria, from Ms. Renea Campers, she's chairwoman of the Liberty County Democratic Committee. They're recommending for your approval, Ms. Patricia A. Burley Jackson, to take the seat that became vacant. This is the, would serve as, obviously, the Democratic Committee representative on the Board of Elections.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we accept Ms. Patricia Burley as a Democratic appointee on the election board.
Second.
Motion, second, we accept Ms. Patricia A. Burley Jackson. New term, March twenty? The term would expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
That's correct, it would fill the unexpired term.
Term of Mr. Jackson, all right. Any further discussion? Show of hands, all in favor, please. All right, Ms. Jackson is appointed.
You know, Mr. Chairman, for a minute, I thought that was the selection committee's.
No.
No, that's the Democratic Committee.
Okay, well, I mean, that's fine, but we were ready just in.
Now, you're a little slow on that.
But Maria has advertised, there are several coming up, that's.
We'll be ready when they come up.
It'll be advertised.
All we need is an application.
Your report, Mr. Brown?
Just very quickly, for y'all, just a lot on the calendar for April. We will be meeting with the cities in the first call meeting to meet with them regarding renewal, possible renewal of T-Splash Number Two. We asked you to do that tomorrow night. You have budget presentations that are coming up for y'all the following week, which are on the fifteenth and on the nineteenth. And then you have also some budget work sessions that are scheduled on the twenty-third of April, and then those, of course, those will continue into May. And I'll get, I'll get, Mr. Tart to send you back out a reminder on those. I know that Samantha's in a, in a schedule, it's been some time back, and we've all had a lot going on, so glad to do that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
What kind of date we looking at on the fire station now?
They're supposed to do a fire system inspection down there this week, and we've got another meeting next week down there. That'll, that has been the main holdup. They anticipate then having a call-in for a punch list. I believe, and then they're trying to get some supplier things done, but I believe that right now you would see a partial CO, temporary CO issued for the administrative portion to move in, probably the first part of next month.
Okay. And we still need to get a meeting scheduled with the mayor of.
Riceburg.
Mayor Riceburg.
Yes, sir, we do.
Because we need, we don't need to let that keep lingering.
I agree. I made a note today.
It's actually getting worse.
I made a note.
You wanna go ahead and make the official announcement about the two-point-seven million?
Two-point-seven million dollars that goes towards the bypass project. We had worked, y'all know, with all the senators, Senator Carter, Senator Osloff, and Senator Warnock. And they were able to, on both sides of the chamber, get two-point-seven in the appropriations bill for, for the utility relocation on that, on that roadway. So it's been a long time coming. Now, that money won't actually go to GDOT or get to GDOT later on this year, so you're probably looking at an early twenty-five let date. Talked to the district engineer last week about that, so. But that is, should be the final piece that everything was needed.
That's great news.
One thing we've done, we've dug plenty of pits to hold her data.
Mr. Chair, since we're talking about this amount of money coming from up the road, where is the roundabout in this picture?
The, the one at one nineteen at Barrington? It's, it's, it's not in the picture right now, 'cause the only thing Mr. Long's done, I think he mentioned last time, was do kind of like a preliminary design and showed it to GDOT, but that we haven't even made a formal submittal there, and GDOT's not obligated any money for that. The other roundabout is funded.
The one on seventeen.
Yes, sir, it is funded by GDOT. We have to do the engineering and we'll let that project locally, but GDOT will pay the construction dollars.
Keep in mind, we need to stay on top of the one for one nineteen and Barrington Ferry, Briar Bay Road.
No, we do.
And you know, I've been asking for a meeting with the folks in that area to at least keep them abreast on what's going on.
And I think Mr. Long, he talked about, I know last time, I think we could show them what we gave to GDOT, but that's not gonna be what GDOT approves. GDOT has an outsource that they send all their design to, and they look at it carefully. And it's, it's not gonna be, I don't think it'll be a regular roundabout.
And the last thing on that, we still need to look at the death highway, one nineteen.
Yep.
It's going to.
Is that?
That's a state route.
It's gonna take a lot of people.
That thing there is, one nineteen is state route. Is the roundabout, all of that is a state route?
It would be on state route, yes, sir.
So they can decide if they want, if they wanted to change the roundabout and put a light up there, that's strictly up to them?
It is.
I just, I see they're fixing to put one or two downtown in, in Hinesville, but that's in the city limits of Riceburg, right?
It is, they're, they are very, very particular. Again, they outsource a lot of this for consultant review. They're very, very particular on number of left turn movements at a, at a, at a red light. Right turn movement, you don't get as much credit for, obviously, 'cause you don't need a light, it's continuous movement. And if you don't meet the threshold, they don't put a light there.
I've even seen they started putting those violas up, you know, where you can't turn lit in there, so.
And then it's, and it's restricted down there, that's tight. So it's gonna be interesting to see what, if anything, they may come back and say, we don't wanna put anything down there.
Like I said, I understand it's a state, but also it's in Liberty County that we represent, and we can at least voice our opinion.
That's right.
Anything new in the Health Department?
We got through the permit process. Mr. Holton will be here at your very next meeting next week to show you the final concept on that building, and we're ready, we've already got the dates selected to go out to bid on it, if you'll greenlight it.
We gonna greenlight it.
It'll be ready.
No doubt on that.
Mr. Chairman, I was in a meeting yesterday afternoon, and I heard a gentleman from Hinesville. He didn't realize I was in the meeting. And he said, yep, Hinesville now, and we got the Health Department, and I stuck my head around the corner, he's, oh yeah, that's the county.
That's what you're saying, that's what you say all the time.
Moving the old house back there or something?
It's gone.
Or demolition?
Yes, ma'am, they finished, they finished today on it. Yes, ma'am, that's, that's step number one, and getting that liability off our hands.
All right, that's awful good of the order.
Yep.
Chair entertain the motion?
So can move.
All in favor? Thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you.